You bet.
And I am calling this meeting to order at ten AM right on time. And I will turn it back to Peter now for our invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, the Holy Spirit equips the church with a rich variety of gifts. Grant that we may use them to bear witness to Christ in lives that are built on faith and love. Make us ready to live the gospel and eager to do your will. So that we may share with all your church in the joys of eternal life. Through Jesus Christ, our Savior and Lord. Amen. Uh, Michael, you're muted.
Thank you, Peter. This meeting was called by the congregation council on February ninth for the purpose of considering action needed to move forward with an affordable housing project. Following that, uh, the council and its meeting on March ninth further defined the purpose of this meeting. Uh, as to present to you, uh, for a non binding vote, the question is God calling us to use this land for affordable housing? Let me kind of emphasize that the question is not, shall we use, which would be sort of a uh, a, a, an operational governance vote. But is God calling us to use, which is a somewhat different question and calls for a somewhat different process? So today we've structured this meeting to be a meeting of discernment in which we uh, follow something close to the lectio divina process. Uh, in my earlier letter to the congregation, I noted that I was impressed shortly after joining Prince of Peace by the use of this kind of technique to discern how to move forward on some planning questions. And it occurred to me that this is the way that what God would call us to, uh, discern how we should move ahead. Uh, so this is a somewhat modified lectio divina process. We will, uh, read a guiding scripture, uh, three times, following which we will have a period of uh, what, what, uh, in lectio divina you would call thinking deeply or dwelling upon a spiritual reality within a text. And with that, I will turn it to Betsy for the first reading of the scripture.
We read this morning from Luke chapter twenty-four, verses thirty-six to forty-nine. This is the very end of Luke's gospel after Easter. While they were talking about this, Jesus himself stood among them and said to them, peace be with you. They were startled and terrified and thought that they were seeing a ghost. He said to them, why are you frightened? And why do doubts arise in your hearts? Look at my hands and my feet. See that it is I myself. Touch me and see, for a ghost does not have flesh and bones, as you see that I have. And when he had said this, he showed them his hands and his feet. While in their joy, they were disbelieving and still wondering. He said to them, have you anything here to eat? They gave him a piece of broiled fish and he took it and ate in their presence. Then he said to them, these are my words that I spoke to you while I was still with you. That everything written about me in the law of Moses, the prophets and the Psalms must be fulfilled. Then he opened their minds to understand the scriptures. And he said to them, thus it is written that the Messiah is to suffer and to rise from the dead on the third day. And that repentance and forgiveness of sins is to be proclaimed in his name to all nations, beginning from Jerusalem. You are witnesses of these things. And see, I am sending upon you what my father promised. So stay here in the city until you have been clothed with the power from on high.
Pastor Peter will now place us into, uh, meeting rooms, small group discussion. In those rooms, consider something you noticed in the scripture.
Oh dear.
What did you fear? How does this reading speak into your own life right now? Uh, Gary Olson will now do the second reading of the scripture. Before that, I just want to say that as you hear this, uh, please consider going deeper, uh, in your discussion rooms. How is this reading speaking to Prince of Peace in this moment in time? How is God calling us to care for our neighbors? And, uh, and I think we'll just move directly from the musical interlude, uh, into the, the breakout rooms. Again, for ten minutes.
While they were talking about this, Jesus himself stood among them and said to them, peace be with you. They were startled and terrified and thought that they were seeing a ghost. He said to them, why are you frightened? And why do doubts arise in your hearts? Look at my hands and my feet. See that it is I myself. Touch me and see, for a ghost does not have flesh and bones, as you see that I have. And when he had said this, he showed them his hands and his feet. While in their joy, they were disbelieving and still wondering. He said to them, have you anything here to eat? They gave him a piece of broiled fish and he took it and ate it in their presence. Then he said to them, these are my words that I spoke to you while I was still with you. That everything written about me in the law of Moses, the prophets and the Psalms must be fulfilled. Then he opened their minds to understand the scriptures. And he said to them, thus it is written that the Messiah is to suffer and to rise from the dead on the third day. And that repentance and forgiveness of sins is to be proclaimed in his name to all nations, beginning from Jerusalem. You are witnesses of these things. And see, I am sending upon you what my father promised. So stay here in the city until you have been clothed with power from on high.
While they were talking about this, Jesus himself stood among them and said to them, peace be with you. They were startled and terrified and thought that they were seeing a ghost. He said to them, why are you frightened? And why do doubts arise in your hearts? Look at my hands and my feet. See that it is I myself. Touch me and see, for a ghost does not have flesh and bones, as you see that I have. And when he had said this, he showed them his hands and his feet. While in their joy, they were disbelieving and still wondering. He said to them, have you anything here to eat? They gave him a piece of grilled fish and he took it and ate in their presence. Then he said to them, these are my words that I spoke to you while I was still with you. That everything written about me in the law of Moses, the prophets and the Psalms must be fulfilled. Then he opened their minds to understand the scriptures. And he said to them, thus it is written that the Messiah is to suffer and to rise from the dead on the third day. And that repentance and forgiveness of sins is to be proclaimed in his name to all nations, beginning from Jerusalem. You are witnesses of these things. And see, I am sending upon you what my father promised. So stay here in the city until you have been clothed with power from on high.
We'll now have a period of, uh, general discussion. Uh, to, uh, be recognized to speak, you can do it a couple of ways. You can, uh, type your request to be recognized in the chat. I'll be monitoring the chat. Um, also you may just raise your hand and Peter or one of the other pastors will, uh, note that and put it in the chat for me and I will recognize you from the chat. Um, the, uh, we have a question in the chat, uh, of establishing a quorum. Um, we do at this point have sixty-two screens, so we assume we have more than the fifty-member quorum. Uh, however, since we will not take official action, um, that, that we'll just note that for the record. Um, so anybody can start, I'd encourage you to, uh, think as you speak, um, that you're sharing this in prayer with God in the presence of the rest of the congregation of, again, discerning God's will, um, as, as a congregation. We'll do this for, uh, we're, we're now at ten forty-two AM. Uh, we're scheduled to go until eleven. We can go a few minutes over. Uh, I will not, uh, limit you, except that if we start to get, uh, uh, too lengthy, we'll, we'll try to cut off at about two minutes per person, but I'm not going to be real rigid about that. So go ahead and ask your question or make your comment. I'm going to recognize Paul Spohnheim.
I, I'm thinking that this passage was well chosen by the planners of this meeting. There is indecision in the passage. I mean, Jesus appears to them and, uh, they're happy to see him. But you noticed the phrase, they were disbelieving in their joy. It's a strange combination. This is, this is Jesus. We, we recognize him, the disciples are talking about, this follows the road to Emmaus. They've been thinking about what the men from Emmaus, the road to Emmaus story are telling them about Jesus being revealed to them in the breaking of bread. Uh, and then Jesus, uh, you know, they are disbelieving. He says, well, what's wrong? Look at my body here, ghosts. They think he's a ghost. He, he persuades them. Uh, and, uh, so there is, uh, maybe we're not settled. Maybe there's indecision. Uh, we're dealing with something that we, uh, are not so familiar with, selling some of our land. We've got, uh, extraordinary, uh, need. There's human need and there's, uh, this remarkable gift of Rose Dietzler. That's sort of the seed money possibility. I, I think that the text fits our situation very well and there is power. It's extraordinary power.
Thank you, Paul. I'll now recognize Asita to speak for his group.
Oh, great. Thank you. Um, just generally, uh, uh, sorry if I summarize some of this stuff, but, uh, you know, we love the scripture. Um, and, um, it's, um, it, you know, right, right now, some members felt that, that the people who are doing this is how, how Jesus has brought his, uh, bones and, and body as a connection to us. Um, to see, you know, that, that they are really, uh, Jesus is standing in front of us, you know, through, through the human connection. Um, you know, sometimes it's easy to have faith, but it's easy to go back to being panicked and worried. Um, that, you know, some had, was, uh, Chris shared that it's more puzzling than fear that, you know, while Jesus was standing in front of them, that disciples were still not sure. Uh, and then, uh, but then it could be that it's not, um, you know, you're, you, you see it absolutely. It's the right thing to do, but there is worry and fear as to what happens beyond that. And what are the details that come beyond that, uh, you know, by Jesus is standing in front of you? Um, everybody agreed that this is a great, great process. This is a great passage for us, um, and that, uh, that we need to take the next step to see where it leads us. Um, Rosa's gift is, is the, is the power, uh, the gift of power from high. Um, and this is the right time and this is the right moment, uh, that we have given a unique opportunity to focus on homelessness. Uh, people of color and indigenous community, this is the moment in time. Um, we can choose to say yes or say something different and see how it evolves. We can amplify the legacy of what Ro-Rose left us. Um, they are multiple sources for food and clothing, but homelessness i- i-is a, a big and growing issue. Um, also, also that was, um, shared was, um, it's also the uniqueness of the opportunity that's given to us and as a mission, right? Uh, we can be anybody else and build a high density, sell it, be a high density, uh, uh, home for homelessness. And just forget about it and anybody else can do it. But this is to understand what is Jesus. When Jesus said, uh, remember what I taught you, remember what I did, just look at what he did. And he, he was, uh, with the most marginalized. He worked amongst the most marginalized people in that community, people who did not have a voice. Uh, and, uh, those are the kind of people that I think, uh, we are called to look at as a neighbor. Um, not, um, not do the easy things that, and you take that rest and then it's going to be difficult. And that's, uh, that's, that's the kind of the summary from our group. Thank you.
Thank you, Asita. I'll now, uh, recognize Marge Booboo.
Marge Boe.
Boe, sorry.
Okay, here we go. Uh, I see it is a hard one to follow. Uh, there, there is something about reading the scriptures three times that I, I think, um, when you said go deeper and deeper, each time something else pops out. What strikes me with the scripture in relationship to us as a, a, a church. In the beginning, Jesus says, peace be with you. And then the disciples are startled and terrified. I think we see a lot of that here in our church. People are startled and terrified. And I say that because of the comments that they make that really do not hold water. I won't go into those, we'll be here too long. But then the scripture, uh, is all tied up in you are witnesses, which is a, there's some comfort in that, but also a challenge. We are witnesses right now, time and space to what's happening in our world. A horrific pandemic, uh, unbelievable unemployment, people losing jobs, not having homes, people being homeless. We are witnesses to that right now. We have to go beyond being startled and terrified. And we have to believe what Jesus says, peace be with you. We can do this. One of the things that I think, uh, Michael wrote in his letters or, or one of the people wrote is that we have a unique situation here. Not every church says, oh, we've got a whole bunch of land. No, we are unique. And I think, um, uh, now is the time. I mean, now is the time where the fifty odd people here need to be reaching out to people that aren't here today, talking to them, discussing this with them and helping them go beyond their startledness and their fear. Thank you. I'm finished.
Thank you, Marge, and I apologize for the pronunciation. I'm not going to call on, uh, Gina and Bill Klock. I'm not sure which of them is going to speak.
There, now I'm on. Yeah, I just answered your question, you know. Bill and I are, Bill and I are a team, but we don't necessarily always deal with the same, um, issues at one time. It is, you know, you all know, I did this once before with the council and everybody knows that. And it was an incredible experience. However, you know, m-my gifts, we have God-given gifts. And one of my gifts is to be able to deal with data and things that are out there and, and analysis. And I just would like to point out a few things. Um, first of all, regarding getting decent data and analysis to start with. Uh, nobody has done anything going to the congregation, excepting there were a couple of things in one early on struggle questionnaire, asking us what we really want to do with, with that property or what our needs are. So some of us are feeling right now a little bit, um, taken aback, being basically told that we're not Christian and we're not listening to Jesus if we don't immediately jump on this. Now, the second thing that we have is, I don't think we started with good data. Um, the only numbers that we've ever seen have been the school district numbers. And I believe that, because I guess that came from the census office. And I think we all know that that included folks who are living with their grandparents, who are living at home and using their grandparents' address. And, you know, whatever. And obviously, you know, there are going to be some kinds of problems like that. Um, right now, you know, the state of Minnesota is just, um, dumping another two hundred million into affordable housing and into rehabbing what's there. Um, plus supposedly people are supposed to be moving out of property some now. And, you know, I was all over the internet looking and, you know, we've got well over a thousand units of affordable housing in Roseville without counting that huge complex in Montreal port that is about a mile and a half north of us. So I guess I'm saying, not that this is necessarily wrong, but that I think we're not taking the time to go through this carefully now, to analyze the data now and so on. Because once you say, ooh, I want to move forward on this instead of, ooh, I want to look a little bit further. You know, we're kind of tied to it. Ooh, I want to look a little bit further, you know, we're kind of tied to it. And I guess that's kind of what I have to say.
Thank you, Jean. I think next is Karen Josephson.
Thanks, everybody. This was a. I, I reiterate the, the comments, how this was a, a good passage to look to. And reiterate the, the comments about the doubts because. I have to admit that in considering this process, I of course have doubts. My biggest fear is that we shared in ours is that. Decisions like this could have the potential to. Cause dissension. But. There's joy in, in the discernment and, and of the process. And as I was looking at the, the frequently asked questions, there was a lot of very. You know, to Jean's point about, you know, making sure that we've got the right data, the facts in order to support our decision. It's spot on. That's definitely something that, you know, I know that the. Group has been working very closely and very, very diligently to try to do, but of course, there's always more research one can do. But one of the pieces that. I'd love us to ponder a little bit more is, what are some of the joys? The disciples responded in joy. What would be some of the joys of having something like this? And I'm kind of envisioning. You know, what types of community events could we have with the, with the residents of this community? How could their life experiences enrich ours? How can we provide some mutual help to enrich both of us? Think playing on the whole Tanzania, Bega, Koba, shoulder to shoulder. Yes, there's, there's, there's the concerns, there's the questions, the frequently asked questions did a fabulous job of laying out with some of those are. But I'd also like us to explore a little bit about. What can, what, what are some of the joys and benefits that could, that could come from this in our discernment? Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. Kent Olson, please.
Thank you. I'd like to speak in favor of movement ahead and answering more questions and figure this out. I'm thinking we should do it. I've heard talk about that with Rosa's gift, we could fix a lot of things around the church, like the roof. But if we didn't have Rosa's gift, we would figure out how to do that, how to fix that roof on our own. But we have this land, we have Rosa's gift. To me, that says, let's give it somewhere else. Let's use it to help other people that don't have as much. We are rich. Let's give it away. But there's still a lot of questions we have to answer where it is, what it is, what's looking at. But I am definitely in favor of using these resources we have to go ahead and help others where we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Karen Carr, did you want to make a comment? I see you have something in the, in the chat. Do you want to speak to them? If not, do we?
Am I, oopsie.
You're good. Go ahead. Now you're muted again. Yes, go.
Okay. Yeah, I just was, you know, just thinking about this whole process over the last. Couple of months and how. You know, I, I wonder about the data. I wonder about, you know, is this the right thing? My son lives in St. Paul and he's real close to a. Counseling center that's in the residential area, you know, so I think about that. But I, you know, I really. So I, I appreciate Jean's comments because she's been through this process and. And it's, it's not a process to take lightly, but I also feel like. You know, I think we're ready to do something now. It does seem like a trying time. And I'll, I'll pass.
I see Deb Cordes. You're muted.
I thought I'd magically unmute. I really have to appreciate all that I've heard. And I don't see. Moving forward means we're not there yet. We all recognize as Jean so eloquently put it, there's some data to gather because we need to be. Nervously confident in a decision. And I think that we can never be guaranteed. But I look forward to more conversation because I, you know, I said this when I was president. I said it when I see that Jean is far back as you and Bill, not that it was that long ago, but it was. We are up to something good at Prince of Peace. We are called to do God's work. We know this, we see this, we feel it. I think if. We will get to a point where we're either going to say, you know what, we're called to do this. Or through this discernment project, we've, maybe we're, we're aiming a slight bit more left or right. But if we don't go through it, if we don't do it, we'll always be left wondering. So in my mind, at least, I think we need to keep moving forward in the discernment process. That's it.
Thank you, Deb. Pastor Betsy, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Michael. I just wanted to share some of the things that our small discussion group talked about. And in response to Karen's question about joys and excitement of what this project could bring. Our group, which was Deb Cordes and Brian and Carol Swanson and myself. Talked about picturing children playing, having the resources of the park next door. Maybe having new people in the congregation, not because they have to come, but because they would feel, might feel called to. The multicultural enrichment that we would gain by having these neighbors. Greater use of our gym as a resource. Having a daycare so close to housing would be mutually beneficial. And other opportunities like there will be counseling for residents, but that maybe that could expand beyond just. Those who live there to other people in the community. So those were things that we identified as. Exciting opportunities to be looking at. Thanks.
Thank you, Pastor Betsy. Pastor Peter, you had a written comment that, that came in from someone who couldn't attend. Would you please share that?
Yeah, Carlin and Sue Moller reached out to me. Unfortunately, weren't able to join us this morning, but they did. Pass along some comments that they wanted shared if there was an opportunity. I'll, I'll just read verbatim what they've got written. Sue and I have followed the information about this project and have a unified response. We sincerely thank the Affordable Housing Team for their exploration and discovery work on this project. And for being so transparent and encouraging congregational input. This is a big deal. So the question is, is God calling us to use this land for affordable housing? We say yes, and here is why we have come to believe this. If we call ourselves Christians, if we really believe that, then in considerations like this, we must ask, what would Jesus do? We have reflected, we have prayed, we have discerned, and our thought process goes like this. One, as Christians, we recognize a human concern, a human reality, a human condition, a human need. And the fact is that many of our neighbors, and we use this term neighbor broadly. Do not have a place to live singly or as a family, or have stable or affordable housing. Two, then as Christians, we wish to help and wonder how we can help. We sense a call, discern the call and respond and act as best we can. Three, and calls create challenges and challenges reveal opportunities. Four, now we have that opportunity in front of us and that opportunity is clearly enabled by resources of land and dollars. Entrusted to our care by a person, Rose Dietzler, who we are convinced is with us in spirit. And is encouraging and empowering us to action on this journey. We believe Rose would enthusiastically support this. What a way to use her gift to let love go. Where we have heard the words, love, where have we heard the words, love thy neighbor? Five, sure, there are some, there may be some risks, but bold opportunities come with some risks. Those are being explored and we want to minimize those risks. Six, certainly face to face and more full communication and discussion is not ideal at this time. With the cloud of the pandemic, but we believe we should move forward with commitment and faith. To summarize, respond positively to the call, accept the challenge. Seize the opportunity, explore this further. Again, what would Jesus do?
Thank you, Peter. At this time, I'm going to ask the people who are audio only, who have phoned in. If they have anything to add and would identify themselves and speak if they do. They're muted. How do we unmute them? Peter?
We can't.
Okay, how we?
So if they, they, they'll need to unmute on their end.
Okay.
So, Chris, there, I have a one question. And if we start investing in this, believing that we will make it happen. Do we believe that the city of Roseville? Which really emphasizes park use for its, for its residents. Would allow rezoning? Are we just hoping they would, or do we believe they would?
Thank you, Krista. I will attempt to, to speak to that. Both in the discussions of the Affordable Housing Team, of which I was a part until I became president. And in the council, I have sort of described this as a chicken and egg proposition, which is to say. We can't get a lot of the information that Jim Klock was talking about. And we can't get a reaction from the city council. Until we know what kind of project we're talking about, which means we have to engage a developer to further define. Exactly what we're talking about. We can't engage a developer until we have a sense of whether God calls us to do this. Which is why this is our starting point. So I don't mean to just beg off on it and say we defer that question. But they do, the, the, the council approval does and would depend a great deal. On exactly what is being proposed and the. Lead responsibility for presenting to the council and persuading the council would be that of the developer. Who will not make a decision to join this effort until we decide if this is what God calls us to do. We are now at eleven oh six. I'm looking about, I can only see one screen at a time. Do we have other people who would wish to speak? Hearing none, I will ask Pastor Ruth to lead us in prayer.
So we're going to take a few moments after settle our discussion time. Peter is going to play, thank you. Peter's going to play one verse for us of some music that we can listen to. I will pray, we'll have about one minute for silence. And then we'll close this part with, with the music again. So I invite you as we begin to open your hearts and your minds and your ears to listen. Close your eyes if that's comfortable for you. Be comfortable in your spot. And take a deep breath as we pray together.
Be thou my vision, oh Lord of my heart. Not be all else to me, save that thou art. Thou mightest both my day and my night. Waiting for sleeping thy presence, my light.
Without objection.
Oh, we're not done yet with the prayer time.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Gracious and loving God, we give you thanks for this day. For sunshine, for community, for the opportunity to discuss together. We give you thanks for the work of the Affordable Housing Team, for their research, countless meetings. Conversations, education, courage, and for bringing us this opportunity. We have been gifted with resources to use for the sake of the world. And ask your presence with us as we decide how best to use them. Give us wisdom, care for one another and for our community. And a vision of what is ours to do. And then help us to let go and trust this process. As we have a moment of silence, we lift our hearts and our prayers to you, trusting that you have called us. Together in Christ as one body. Amen.
And now. Without objection, the formal part of the meeting will stand adjourned and Pastor Peter will explain to us the polling process.
In just a moment, you're going to have a poll appear on your screen. And you just have to click on an answer to the poll. We've got a, we've got a sample question first for you to practice with. Now, some of you who are maybe connected just through telephone will not have an opportunity to participate this way. But know that after this meeting, in just a little while, there will be another poll placed on our website. Where you can respond. And those who maybe haven't had a chance to participate today would also get a chance to, to weigh in. Know that your responses are completely anonymous. We will only see the result, the aggregate result. We won't see the, who, who voted in what way. So it's like a secret ballot in a way. A reminder that this is just a poll. It's not a, a binding vote of the congregation. This is just a, a mechanism to gauge support for the question. That's before us and that we have been discerning in the months prior and all the way up through until today in this moment. So with that, recognizing that there is only one answer that can be logged per screen. You will know, you will see very quickly that there are plenty of screens here that only, that have more than one people. Sitting before them. And so there is a way to, to pad the vote, if that's the right phrase. So that it represents ac- more accurately how many people are voting. There's, there are five options that will be presented to you, to the question. Option one is yes. Option two is yes times two, because there's two of us who both support this. An affirmative answer to the question. There's a no, and then there's a no times two. Because there isn't, there are two of us who are opposed to, to this question. And then the final answer is there is one yes and there is one no in the room. And you would like to log that appropriately. Now, you all have been clued in and you know that there's one family here that has three people on their screen. Unfortunately for the Howgans, there's only, we don't have a, a third option for you, but there is the option to log in later. On our website to, to add another response if you would like. Again, this is the honor system. We want the votes to act. Um, again, this is the honor system. We want the votes to accurately reflect, uh, the will of this congregation. So, um, you know, I caution you from thinking, oh, I'll just double my vote, uh, but, um, because God knows. And so, uh, uh, that's pastoral privilege, uh, at work for you right there. Now, here's our test poll, uh, and I'm really curious to hear how you will respond to this question. The question, for those who, uh, maybe are on their phones, the test question is, should Pastor Peter wear a bow tie on Tuesdays? And
Peter.
If you had a chance to log your response, do that now. Hopefully you'll see that, all right? We're going to close this poll in just 10 seconds, so hopefully you've responded. This was a good tester, a practice round for us because this responses will look identical for the question that's really before the congregation today. People want to know if this is a binding vote. Uh, um, all ties are pretty tight around the neck, so that is kind of a binding vote, I would say. Yes. All right, we're going to close this poll. All right, now I hope everybody's ready to vote on the real question today, which is, is God calling?
Yes or no?
Is God calling us to use this land for affordable housing? And here is that question.
Just went down, no, no. Will we be seeing you in bow ties on Tuesday?
That depends on, uh, the result of the poll, I suspect, and whether or not you see me on Tuesdays.
When will you have the results of the poll after the, the second poll opens or?
We're going to, we're going to reveal the results of this poll, uh, here in just a moment. And hopefully those who have, would like to have voted have voted at this point. We'll give it 10 more seconds. And here are the results. And Betsy, due to a glitch in my, in the system on my end, I actually cannot see the results. Or Michael, would one of you, um, just read aloud for those who are tuned in?
The results, it doesn't list numbers, absolute numbers, but 49% yes. Uh, single votes. Uh, 22% yes times two. No, 5% for one, no, 16% for two. And one yes plus one no, 7%. Uh, I'm not sure statistically how that breaks out in terms of absolute vote. I think it, uh, you're going to have to compute that for me. Is that 22% mean?
It's 22% of, there were 62 screens.
Okay. So we have 49 single screens, 49%.
Yep.
Okay, somebody can do the math on that. I need a spreadsheet to do it and I don't have it right now.
I think if you look at the, um,
It's the number.
Also, that's the number.
Yeah, the number in the parentheses.
I'm not seeing on my results.
The parentheticals?
It's, it's just in percentages.
Right, it's in percentages. So if it's 22% of the, of the screens were yes times two.
Yeah, there's, the, the actual numbers are in parentheses next to the percentages. Right, that's what I was saying.
Okay, I'm not seeing that on my screen.
Uh, would, Karen, would you just say aloud, there's a glitch with the, with this share poll function, unfortunately. But you're seeing it, so can you just announce the, the, the numbers in the parentheses for yes?
So yes, there were 27. Yes, times two is 12.
So that would be 24.
So that would be 24. No is three.
Okay.
No times two is nine, which makes 20, which makes 18. And then one yes, one no is four. So that would be four yes, four no.
Yeah. So I, I see that as 55 yeses and 25 no's. Out of, so a total of, um, 80, 80 votes.
80 votes.
All right.
And that is 68.75%.
Next steps, um, the council and the Affordable Housing Team will review this and report back to you what, uh, this means for any further actions. Um, it obviously means that a majority of you favor moving forward, that this is what God calls us to do with the land. But a significant minority do not, so we're going to have to do some further discernment on exactly what that means. And without further comments, again, we've already closed this meeting in prayer, but somehow I think we need to close again. Peter, would you please close us with prayer?
I would be glad to. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this day, for all of the promise, uh, embedded within this moment in time for our congregation. We're grateful for your presence woven in and amongst us as we continue to discern your will, your vision for your church, uh, in this place. Give us the courage to, uh, continue to keep our ears and eyes and our hearts open to the needs of those around us, to the needs of your world. Give us the courage to, uh, ask harder and harder questions and to go deeper and deeper into the promise you have placed before us all. Bless us now as we go, go forth from here and carry on with the work, uh, that you call us to do.
And thank you so much for your faithful participation in this. I'm, I'm, I'm really happy. I'm really comforted that we had a chance to do this.
Amen. Great to be with you all today.